Welcome everyone to the May, regular May meeting of the Union Township Planning Commission. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. So, next item is roll call, please.
Albrecht. You're muted.
You'd think one day you just remember this, right? Sorry about that. I'm here, Union Township, Isabella County, Mount Pleasant, Michigan.
Thank you. Lap.
I'm here, Isabella County, sorry, Union Township, Isabella County.
Shingles.
Here, Isabella County, Union Township, Mount Pleasant.
LaBelle.
Union Township, Isabella County.
Darren.
Here, Union Township, Isabella County.
Buckley.
Here, Union Township, Isabella County.
Cody.
Here, Union Township, Isabella County.
Squatchrito.
Here, and I am currently in the city of Mount Pleasant in Isabella County.
And we have Fuller who is excused. So we do have a quorum.
Okay, thank you very much. So, this is our first meeting under our new agenda order. So we move directly to approval of tonight's agenda, item four. So, are there any, are there any additions to or corrections to the agenda that's been prepared for us tonight? And if not, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as prepared.
So moved.
Support.
Okay, so a motion by Shingles with a second by Darren to approve tonight's agenda. Any discussion? All right, if not, then I'll just ask for a voice and/or hand signal vote, all in favor of approving tonight's agenda. Please say aye or indicate with a sign.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, none opposed, so a motion carries. Agenda is approved. Next item is approval of the minutes from April 20th. So our last regular meeting was April 20th. And you have the minutes from that meeting. Right behind it in the packet. Are there any corrections to the April minutes? They look pretty complete. We can have a motion to approve the minutes if you like.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes of the April 20th, 2021, meeting minutes as presented.
Support.
Okay, so there was a motion by Darren, seconded by Cody, to approve the April 20th minutes as, as submitted, as, as prepared. Any further discussion? All right, once again, just a voice hand signal vote, all in favor, please say aye and/or signal.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? I see none opposed, so I'll declare that motion carried. So minutes are approved. Next item is correspondence, board reports, presentations. First item under that is item A, Commissioner Cody, updates from Board of Trustees.
We've had a couple of meetings since our last planning commission. In those meetings, we adopted the mandatory ordinance for the PREZ 20-02 parcel at the 2266 Northway Drive from the B7 to the I2. We adopted the mandatory ordinance, PREZ 20-01 parcel at 5048 East Pigger Road from the R2B to the B7. We adopted the McGurk subdivision paving special assessment district resolution. We approved the updated bylaws and rules of procedure for the planning commission. And then the Board of Trustees wanted me to thank the planning commission for all their hard work and dedication. So thank you from the Board of Trustees, and keep up the good work.
Thank you. Any questions for Commissioner Cody? Commissioner Buckley.
Yeah, just out of my own personal self-interest, the action taken on the McGurk State's Special Assessment District. Do you have a sense of, I was not able to attend the trustees meeting. Do you have a sense of what the next step is? Was that the final resolution or is there additional steps?
That was the final one.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
At least five of them.
Yeah, yeah.
So it was the last step.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, thank you for that report. Next item is, is Commissioner Buckley, updates from ZBA.
We did not have a meeting last month, and I can give you a little bit of a preview of next month. There will not be a meeting in June either. So that's all I have for updates.
Okay. Any questions for Commissioner Buckley for ZBA-related issues? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Last one is Commissioner Darren, updates from sidewalks and pathways committee.
So, we have a meeting next week for sidewalks and this is for prioritization of projects. So since last meeting, Rodney asked us all to submit individually what we wanted as priorities. For, and I, I think I did it for the next three or four years. But everybody else on the committee was supposed to submit their personal priorities. And then I think Rodney's going to probably present them at the next meeting and see where we land. My direction was to take what was original priority for the sidewalks and pathways and get it completed. So that's, that's how I went at it. Nothing, well, I think I did put something new at the end, but most of it, finishing up what the original priorities were. And that was it. We'll, we'll have more next meeting.
Very good. Any questions for Mike? Okay, well, we'll look forward to getting further information on that from you in the next, next meeting. Any other, any other correspondence or presentations or reports that anyone is aware of or has? All right, we'll move on. So the next item is the first public comment. So we have two public comments in our meetings. The first one, which is towards the beginning of the meeting, is regarding items not on tonight's agenda. So if anyone is in the public there that has an issue that they'd like to address that's not on our agenda tonight, they're welcome to do so at this time. Hit your, hit your raise hand button, we'll recognize you. We ask you to give us your name and address for the minutes and limit your comments to three minutes on items that are not on tonight's agenda. So this first public comment portion is open at 7:10. And I'm not seeing any indication yet that anyone who is in the attendees is interested in speaking at this time. So seeing none, we'll go ahead and close that back up. There is extended public comment later in the meeting on any items. So, so public comment is closed at 7:10. So we're ready to move on to new business. So we have several new business items tonight. The first one is PSPR 21-08, McGurk Mini Storage Expansion Final Site Plan. So we looked at the preliminary site plan at a recent meeting, whether that was April or March, but we looked at it, we approved it. So they're back with the final site plan. And so I will turn it over to Rodney for a, any introduction and/or updates that you want to give us. And then we'll move to hear from the applicant and we'll do our deliberation.
Thank you very much. You, you have our report dated May 11th, the final site plan. We did find that, that overall that the, the project was, was predominantly consistent with the, the standard for final site plan approval. We have two exceptions to that. One is that, that we're still waiting to have a final answer from our Public Services Department related to required outside agency permits. That review is still outstanding. And also there were some missing exterior lighting information that, that, that is needed to complete the review on that part of the, the project. Both of those items are not expected in any way affect the overall site design. In fact, the applicant has turned in an updated site plan, I think just today, updated lighting plan, I'm sorry, that, that provided the fixture information we were looking for. So, and, and I'm not expecting the Public Services Department to have any, any concerns that are going to alter the site design. So with that in mind, we have included a recommendation for, for approval on this plan, finding it, as you said, generally consistent with the standards. And we've, we've included two recommended conditions, one that we get that Public Services approval and the, and the other one that we get the, the lighting details. So with that, with those two conditions, we're comfortable with the approval of this plan.
Okay, thank you. Any, any questions from Commissioners for Rodney at this point on, on the report from, from, from him? All right, well, you'll certainly have an opportunity to ask as we go through our deliberation. So I see Tim has joined us. So anything you'd like to say by way of introduction at this point?
No, very brief. Peter, Rodney and I had a meeting on Friday. Went through four different projects. Three of them are in front of you tonight. Going through the, the reviews. We hustled up and tried to get the plans turned back in on all three. And I know turning it in at the end of the day Monday, which means Tuesday morning for them, that they probably haven't had a chance to, to look at the lighting yet, but Peter can let me know if he needs anything else and we'll make sure that we, we provide it.
So the applicant is here and township staff is here. So this is on the floor and open for discussion by Commissioners. Questions, comments?
I just wanted to ask Rodney, I don't believe there's any conflict here. This particular applicant is a client of mine. However, this property is not part of anything that I am representing him on. I don't believe there's any conflict of interest, but at least wanted to let the other planning commissioners know that this particular applicant is a client of mine.
So that, in that circumstance, essentially when a potential conflict is raised, the rest of the commission can, can essentially take a vote. You can, you as a body can decide whether or not Doug has an actual conflict in this case. He, so if, if, that, that really would be the next appropriate step. And if you found he did have a conflict by a majority vote, then he would, he would need to sit down. If you find he doesn't have a conflict by a majority vote, he, he can continue and, and vote in the matter.
Okay, are there any questions from Commissioners about Doug's statement? Any clarification needed, any further information? Commissioner Lap.
What's the nature of your, I'm sorry, I really, I know your names from, on signs around the area, but I really don't know what you or the McGurks. I mean, in what ways would you consider him a client or them a client?
Well, I'm in the real estate business, commercial and residential real estate. So his M20 facility, I'm currently been hired or contracted to lease out any commercial space that I can for, for the, for the McGurks. More specifically Chuck McGurk. And just, but again, the property that's in front of us here has nothing to do with that particular center. Just want to make that distinction very clear. I'm just saying that the applicant is a current client of mine. This has nothing to do, there's no financial benefit or gain in any way based on whether this project gets passed or not.
Thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Buckley. You're muted.
Sorry. Do we need a motion for a vote on that or?
Oh. Well, the question is relatively simple. It's, it's, do you believe there's, there's a conflict of interest or do you believe there's not a conflict of interest? What's your recommendation? Should we have a motion to that effect or?
A motion would be appropriate, actually, one way or the other.
And I will entertain a motion one way or the other.
I'd like, I'd like to make a motion then to allow Commissioner LaBelle to, I guess, to state that there is no perceived conflict of interest by the planning commission and allow him to participate in the review of this site plan.
Support.
So the motion was by Buckley to essentially say that the a vote for the motion would say that there's, that the Commissioner believes that there's not a conflict of interest and that he should participate in the evaluation of the site plan. And the second was by Cody. Any further discussion on the motion? If not, then I'm going to ask for a, since this is an official action, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote, please.
LaBelle.
Abstain.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm really sorry.
That was a test.
Lap.
Okay, I've got to clarify. So if I'm voting yes, I'm voting that we do not see a perceived conflict of interest.
Correct.
Okay, I'm voting yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Shingles.
Yes.
Buckley.
Yes.
Darren.
Yes.
Cody.
Yes.
And Squatchrito.
Yes. All right, thank you. So you're not banished to the other side. You can stay on this side. So we'll proceed. So questions, again, questions for the, for the applicant, comments on the project? I guess I'll ask a question. It's kind of a trivial question, but I guess that's just raised my curiosity. On page two of your plan.
Okay.
It's the existing topography map?
Yes.
But I'm, but I'm assuming, I'm assuming that's not the existing topography on the portion that's already built.
No, this is, this was the topography when the, the land was first looked at for development.
Hmm, okay. Has that, has that portion that you're going to be building on already been graded and prepared?
Yeah, we had a site plan approval on this previously. What we came back for was modification in two buildings. And they had gotten started bringing fill in and, and compacting and grading. They're bringing it up to grade and there's still a ways to go there. So.
Yeah, it looks like there's a lot to fill in. Well, it's a pretty straightforward project and we did look at it preliminarily. So but again, any, any comments or questions? Commissioner Darren.
And the, the difference in the density of the screening on the new property versus the old property, does that symbolize anything or just it meets our?
It, it meets the, the requirements of the current zoning ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that directly reflects the change from the 1991 ordinance to the 2020 ordinance.
Yeah.
I just wanted to ask a question.
Yeah, if you go back, the heights of trees, I think could be four feet in the old ordinance and they're eight feet now. So, so looking at the space, there are much larger trees that you're planting.
Right.
So I think it's density-wise, it'll actually be more dense because the, the trees are, are larger at the time of planting.
Do you find that a, that change in the ordinance, ordinance, do you find that to save the client's money or the, or be less trees, but bigger trees?
But eight-foot trees are, are getting very expensive. There's, there's a big difference between six-foot and eight-foot when you're, when you're looking at cost.
Is it a wash or is it?
No, no, it's definitely not a wash.
Okay. Good to know.
Commissioner Buckley, if you're hand raised, are you wanting to make a comment?
I'm, I'm just curious. This might be more of a question for Rodney. I know that we don't have sidewalks indicated on this particular site plan. And I agree that they're not necessary at this time because there's, they're not on the way to anywhere. But in the review and approval of this particular plan, do we need to attach any statement or comment about sidewalks being required if there's additional build-out in, in this development or is that just something that we address at the time, future development?
That, that will be addressed then. The ordinance requirements will apply. The, simply is no, no need for them here. There's no really place for them to go on this particular site, but they would be required as, as part of other development. And he actually, Mr. McGurk is under obligation to put some public sidewalks in already based on prior approvals.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? We can also have a motion to approve at any time or a motion at any time, I should say. Commissioner Cody.
I'll make a motion to approve the final site plan with conditions. The PSPR 21-08 Final Site Plan for Phase Two of the McGurk Mini Storage Buildings on parcel number 14-020-20-001-05, located in, on approximately 8.87 acres located at the western dead end of Lexi Lane in the northeast quarter of the Section 20 and in the B5 Highway Business Zoning District, finding that the April 23rd, 2021 site plan can comply with the applicable applicable zoning ordinance requirements for the final site plan approval, including sections 14.2, point P, point required site plan information and 14.2, point S, point standards for site plan approval, subject to the following conditions. One, Township Public Service Department approval prior to issuance of building permit for this project. Two, details of the manufacturer's specification sheets for the proposed exterior wall pack fixtures and updated photometric plan sheet referencing this specific fixture shall be submitted to the zoning administrator for administrative review excepted prior to issuance of the building permit for this project.
Motion has been made by Cody. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second is by Lap. Motion has been made to approve the site plan with the conditions specified. Further discussion? Commissioner Darren.
Yes, um, this is having to do with the second bullet point about the luminaires. I have in my packet from dial locks what looks like the luminaires from you can see that or not, not really. White paper it doesn't like, but it has luminaires and it has the hasn't laid out on Tim's plan as to how it affects the existing property. Is that right, Tim? That, go ahead, Tim.
It's true, but what was asked was not necessarily that. They wanted specifics on the fixtures that were being installed. So the sheet that was added were photos of the fixtures and the actual specification of the fixture itself, not just how it casts the light. So that when they're installed, they can be verified.
Okay.
So one of the things that, that, that we're working with our contractors, our engineers like Tim is to make, have all the information be on the site plan set itself. Because of course, it's, the site plan set is what you're approving. So when they provide additional sheets, supplemental information is not really included in the site plan set. And we've run into issues with that occasionally where, where down the road, that information was not saved, for example, on, on, on a project. And, and so we, we want everything to be on the site plan itself.
So whatever's submitted to the building, for the building permit.
Yeah, and, and be accurate to what's actually going to be installed. So that's, those details need to be on there.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Other comments or, or about the motion? All right, not, then I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Darren.
Yes.
LaBelle.
Yes.
Buckley.
Yes.
Shingles.
Yes.
Cody.
Yes.
Lap.
Yes.
Squatchrito.
Yes.
And Albrecht.
Yes.
The motion carries eight to zero.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tim.
Okay, so the next item is another final site plan that we previously approved, the preliminary site plan. This is PSPR 21-09. The Den on Broomfield, this is the project at the corner of Broomfield and is a, no, is it?
It's Sweeney.
Sweeney, yes, thank you. Is Broomfield and Sweeney. And so once again, just ask Rodney if there's anything you'd like to say by way of introduction. Then we'll give Tim an opportunity to comment and we'll move to our deliberations.
So you have our report again dated the 11th of May. We, we found that the final site plan is in good order generally. Here again, where the Public Services Department did not have the review complete time. So that, that is still a pending issue, but that is, that, that is one that we're comfortable with, that will not alter the overall site design. There are some minor corrections that need to be made to be fully consistent with, with the requirements for, for final site plan. But they are minor corrections and they can be easily made without affecting the site design. We would note that the site plan looks a little different than the preliminary site plan in a couple of areas. One related to the building itself, which we'll talk about in a moment. The other related to parking in that Mr. BB went back and, and updated the parking standards to follow the, the current ordinance. And, and he found that he did not need as much parking as he thought. So the, the original site plan had a kind of a overflow parking area to the south, and that has been removed from this, this project. The parking does meet all our, our requirements that apply as, as depicted on this final site plan. The, I think the key item I would note is on, on page two of our report, page 77 of the packet. And that's related to what we titled, there's number six in the report, building form and composition. This is not an ordinance requirement, but it is an issue potentially with regards to being consistent with the master plan. For site plan projects, the Michigan Zoning Act and our ordinance For site plan projects, the Michigan zoning act and our ordinance both have, uh, the same provision, which basically says that any site plan needs to be consistent with our planning documents, including our master plan. And in this case, the the, uh, the architecture, the architectural design of this these buildings has changed significantly from the early version that you saw in twenty nineteen, uh, the the original concept, concept drawings. Uh, and what you what you have before you now is is, uh, I I refer to this more quasi-industrial in character. Uh, yeah, I noticed some of the materials there, uh, there, you have an elevation drawing, I have a uh, a color rendering of that, that I can share the screen, I think you may have also received that uh, just very recently in the email. Uh, but but we just noted in here that there are some master plan policies, we noted three uh, statements in the master plan that would seem to, uh, address this particular issue as a commercial building in in the commercial district. Um, and, uh, and so we want to bring it to your attention, uh, this is, uh, for you to look at and and consider whether uh, what's proposed meets meets the, uh, or is consistent with the policies of the master plan. Uh, but I'll do right now is I'll, just so you have it, I'll share the screen. So hopefully can you see the, uh, uh, can you see the the exterior drawing there?
No, there it is.
Okay. So.
Can you expand that on your screen?
Yep, acrobat, Adobe Acrobat has been arguing with me, uh, for the last twenty minutes and so I think it ran away when I tried to do it, how's that?
Very nice.
Okay. So with that, I'll 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 turn it to back over to you and and Mr. Bibi.
Okay. Any immediate questions for Rodney, um, what he just said? I'm doing my best, I can't, I can only see a few of you now with the sh- screen sharing, so I'm scrolling up and down the, uh, the panelist list to look for raised hands, uh, Commissioner Lab?
Um, I also, I noticed that too, I didn't realize it was that different until, um, I was reading the comments in the report. Um, it does seem very industrial for where it would be located, it doesn't look like other buildings in that area. I could see it fitting in better other places in town, but in that area, I agree, I think it might look kind of odd. But again, I don't know, um, what do people think, it might be something that'd be very popular with students, though, I mean, it's that that kind of look might be a very popular, uh, selling point for the condos there.
Okay, um, I think I'd like to, um, let, uh, Tim Bibi in here to, uh, give us your introduction and then stand for questions, and I'm sure there'll be some discussion about this issue among others.
Yeah, and and Phil, I'd like to to make sure that um, Bob Case is on and he is the architect that did the design work. Um, as you guys know, my work stops the building face and goes outward, I'm I'm a site engineer. Um, I'm not an architect. And so, um, if Rodney can allow him to, uh, be be heard when it comes to to questions on the building and and what the facades are going to look like, how the trends of design, Bob will be able to to answer that a lot better than than I ever could.
Yeah, I I think if if you can bring him in on over onto the side, that's fine with me.
Okay, and then, uh, as far as the the comments, again, we we had a meeting on, uh, on Friday, we went through, uh, there were everything from uh, when the the site plan set was sixteen drawings instead of twenty-two drawings now. Um, we had referenced, uh, sheet five of sixteen still in a note, so there were, there were a lot of those those things that we cleaned up. Um, the only thing that is still outstanding to my knowledge on this is, uh, we have a request in under item item eight is exterior lighting. Uh, the electrical engineer is redoing his documents so that they're formatted in twenty-four by thirty-six so that they can become part of the set, uh, making sure that the uh, the foot candles that are shown are legible at that scale. And he's also adding in the the required details on the poles and things of that sort that that Rodney has asked for. So, uh, we did not get that back in time on Monday to get in into Rodney, we did not get it in today either. So, um, but the lighting information was turned in, it does meet the ordinance, it's just you can't at the the size that it was, and especially when it gets reduced for you guys, you couldn't read it. So, um, he's changing that format and getting that ready to turn back in. We're hoping that that, uh, we can do this with a staff review. And I see, uh, Bob Case is down on the bottom of my screen. So, um, if if there's anything that you have in regards to, uh, building, this is the guy that you want to talk to.
And he's very, very, very conveniently, um, standing in front of his building or sitting in front of his building. Um, yeah, I guess I'd like to just hear you, let me ask you this question. So that middle part there that is red, uh, is, you know, it's meant to look like like brick or or, you know, brick-like sorts of things, but yet it's metal, is that right?
Yes, it is.
Can you, can you explain why that's metal rather than the actual stone?
Well, it's a, it's a, it's a metal panel that's approximately the same size as a concrete block. About, it's actually about ten by ten and high by twenty wide. And it's really going to be just a skin, and so there's much less weight uh, and mass to that material, we kept all of that at the base of the building around the perimeter, as you notice, about a two foot high a four inch width of masonry capped off by a limestone accent band. Uh, it it's just a visual technique that I like to use to anchor the the building uh, both visually and from a mass standpoint.
Hmm. And if I'm walking by, and I'm not, you know, I'm not putting my nose right up to it, but if I'm just walking by, do I have the, do I have the mental feel that that portion of the building is stone, or is it obviously a metal sheet that's been kind of superficially made to look like stone or brick?
Well, that's, I guess that will, that is a good question. Um, that is a good question. Because I think I think different people are going to potentially see that as a different material, because it is a newer, um, as people have noticed and mentioned, there are more and more buildings that are using metal skins for the exterior. Uh, you know, one of the design examples that we went off of was the, uh, courtyard by Marriott, just about a mile away. Um, which gives that kind of this flair that we're looking at, and the same as the the, uh, I think it's, uh, the Union Shops, uh, just south of here uh, have kind of that business, commercial look flavor that we kind of have on the first floor with the awnings and the metal and the ethos material. Um, but I think it's going to be a very durable, very high quality exterior skin, which is, you know, certainly spelled out in the standards of the zoning ordinance, uh, that those type of materials be used.
Okay, well, I want to open it to the other commissioners, so questions on that, questions on other items, comments? Uh, I'll just, let me ask Rodney real quick, are you, are you specifically asking us or re- recommending that we pass judgment on that issue separately? Uh, I mean, there's this, I see there's a separate motion for that. Um, would that be your recommendation?
Uh, it it would in this case, uh, it if this was a case where where the the architectural design was was, uh, in the ballpark of these three provisions, I, you know, I would say, let's just you accept it, and as you're you're in your final site plan action, your green essentially meets the criteria. This, you know, to, the reason I brought it up is from my perspective, uh, this design is not even in the same ballpark with these three, uh, these three criteria, but ultimately, this is not my judgment call, this one's yours, it's your master plan. Uh, and so it's, so my recommendation would be, yes, to make a motion on it. Um, because I think what you do here is going to, to, I think, as the architect said, is going to establish, or at least continue, as the architect said, uh, a tone and a character for other projects that that will, that may come up, uh, both along Broome Field here, along Sweeney and elsewhere in the in the blue, uh, the, uh, Bluegrass Center area.
Hmm. Okay, so again, it's open for questions from commissioners, comments. Uh, Commissioner Darren?
So, uh, because, you know, we're, we're pretty young at this blend of commercial residential. Um, and when I look at this and I look at the one that's downtown, uh, in city of Mount Pleasant, um, I I personally, and and maybe this goes back to what Commissioner Lab said, but I I like this design, I think it will be. I like the materials that, uh, we're using. Um, you know, we we've put in a lot of, uh, medical buildings uh, in the recent years, and they all look like houses in their neighbor, in the, you know, uh, medical park neighborhoods. And I think there's a place for that, but I think with where we're trying to go with the combination of commercial and living space, I I think that we do need to have some change in the facade. And, um, I personally, and looking at that a lot today, um, I think if if I was to put it anyplace, I I think I would try and put it there. And it may may not look like a lot of the other buildings out there. But as Rodney points out, it may look like the buildings that come to us in the future, because I'm assuming this is a good development, this is what developers want to put in. Um, and I think we have a good talent for this, I think that uh, this type of being around commercial buildings, like if there's a Starbucks on that first floor, that's going to sell out the apartments, right, the condos, it's, people want, of certain age, want to be around it. So my my feeling is we're we're going to have to start someplace and I personally like this look, it's different.
Very good, other comments? Uh, Commissioner Cody? You're muted.
Muted.
You're muted?
You're still muted.
Hopefully she wasn't chewing me out, she's still.
Thanks. Okay, so I don't feel this is consistent with the master plan. And you know, anything we passed has to be consistent with the master plan. It's all metal, there's no brick, I mean, it's painted on, how long's that going to last, I mean, you know, I mean, if lines sit out right in the master plan policy, you know, I don't know, I I liked the building before, I thought it looked amazing. And a lot of changes have been made to this, so I mean, I do know that we need to go along with the master plan when we do these. That's just my opinion.
Okay, uh, let me ask, just as a, before I go to Tim, let me just ask the architect to clarify. Is there anything that's painted on the building, or is it, is it a sheet?
Yeah, no, they're, they are, uh, all of the metal panels are prefinished of metal. Uh, there is, there's nothing that's, uh, there's nothing that is really painted on that shouldn't last uh, a very long time. Certainly, certainly from a material quality standpoint, it's it's equal or exceeding uh, anything within that area, I feel confident about that.
Okay, and the the parts that are are metal are the black part and the brick colored part, but the 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 upper kind of cream colored part is Rodney described it as being kind of stucco-like.
Uh, correct, a ethos exterior insulated finish system.
Yeah, I was, that that was an acronym I'd never seen before, is it, is it, is it like crush, like it's if I touched it, I'd have the sense that I was touching something that was stonish or or?
It actually is, is, it it comes in many textures, and there's even, I just finished a pro- project in Badex for, uh, a healthcare facility that even had a swirl type finish that I had never even seen before. Um, it it, which almost looked like a stone. Uh, so that was a very nice finish, but in this case, we actually have caught out to to use like a sand finish, so if you were to go up and rub it, uh, it's it's a multi-layer over rigid insulation um, finish that has, uh, insulated properties of the insulation in the multi-levels of mesh and, for lack of a better term, like a plaster finish.
And, uh, just if I may add to that, uh, if I, as I understand it, the cornice work is also the same material, is that correct? Yeah, th- this is moldable material, I think most of, uh, Disney World is made out of it, for example. Uh, the, most of the the, uh, sites and amusement parks often are done that, it's very easy to work.
Very easily to shape it, because you you're basically shaping the original insulation, and then you build with the mesh and the the multi-finish coats over top of that, you can really get any profile that you want using this material.
Um, Tim, did you have a con, I'll go to, uh, Ryan next, but I, Tim had his hand up.
No, I just wanted Bob to be able to to comment back that um, the metal isn't, isn't what you think of as painted metal. It, it's, uh, it's not something that's going to flake off as as it weathers. Uh, it's, it's made i- as part of the metal that comes.
Okay. Uh, Ryan?
Yeah, I guess, uh, I'm, I'm a little torn on the issue. Uh, I do tend to agree that, although I think that the the seal that's being used here, I mean, and and please correct me if I'm wrong, but this is essentially barn steel, and um, which is a great exterior for, um, a lot of uses and lasts, um, you know, in forty, fifty years. Um, of course, the planning commission makes decisions that affect our community for forty, fifty, a hundred years, so um, if if you've ever seen a barn that is with barn steel that's fifty years old, you can tell what that steel looks like versus brick or something else, you also see how the brick ages, so I I do have concerns, even though I do know that this is this is a finish that, um, we're seeing more and more of, and I do think that it's something that we're seeing downstate a little bit, um, becoming kind of a, a, certainly a trend, um, as far as design goes, uh, my my primary concern with it is that um, even though I I don't get the impression the decision here is being made, uh, due to, um, uh, a a cost issue in terms of, um, going the cheaper routes, um, if if we do set a precedent of allowing a building to be eighty percent steel exterior, um, that there will be a additional site pan plans in the future that, um, may choose to go, uh, with a steel, um, steel exterior strictly for, um, the kind of lower quality but lower cost as well, and and that's what we see in a lot of our big warehouse buildings is is steel walls and those sorts, and I'm not suggesting that that this is you know, going down that road, but I'm, I am concerned a little bit about the precedent of how much steel is being used. Um, versus, uh, when I was originally looking at the new plans, I thought that the the red was actually brick and 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 from the, um, using the steel on the, essentially kind of on the corners as an accent, I'm I I'm probably okay with, but I do have a concern about an entire development being like I say, eighty percent steel, uh, because of wh- what may follow, the site plans that we may see when they follow.
Let me ask Rodney a question. Let's just say hypothetically that that a majority of the commission was willing to say that this was acceptable. Are, to what extent does, does the planning commission reserve the right to say that something like? Are, to what extent does, does the planning commission reserve the right to say that something like this is acceptable in location X, but may not be acceptable in location Y?
Um, well, your, your master plan, uh, policies are, are general to commercial buildings and to buildings in the Bluegrass Center area. So I, I think that whatever statement you might make here would apply to other, other buildings that are in that same, those same categories.
You know, you're. But just in, but just in the Bluegrass Center area or in other parts of the township?
Well, you have, you have two policies, uh, uh, that are intersecting, intersecting here. You have the Bluegrass Center area in, uh, which has some language, and then you have this commercial building, uh, policies. And actually, all three of these items, I believe, come out of the commercial building category. Essentially, the Bluegrass said, the Bluegrass area says the commercial building policies apply in the Bluegrass area. Uh, and so I believe, if I recall correctly, all three of these are part of the general commercial building language. Um, and so it, because he would, would apply in other areas of the township that are also zoned and planned commercial.
Okay.
Now, these are policies. These are not ordinances. We're not interpreting an ordinance. We're interpreting policy documents. So you could, uh, down the road, uh, essentially make a different decision. Uh, I think that if, if, uh, we got to that point, we would probably want to develop some ordinance language. So you, you would, you would have something more clear to work with. Uh, and we would have a stronger, uh, case behind whatever, whatever you might decide to do.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Buckley, is that a new hand or the same hand?
Yeah, actually, your, your question prompted one of the, a, a question that I had for Rodney. Um, it, it, let's say we were to, 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 tonight we were to say, uh, we don't wanna, we don't think this conforms with our master plan, so we're gonna request that they use a different exterior. Um, in the future, let's say twenty years from now, or however long, maybe there's a windstorm or something. Reciting or resurfacing the exterior of a building is not a planning commission um, decision to make. It is a administrative staff, um, issue that permit. Um, so if, if there were another building in, let's say in this area that is not currently, uh, a steel building, but um, through the permitting process wants to add steel, uh, what is that? How, how, how does the staff handle a decision like that?
Yeah. It's a great question. Uh, the, uh, we're, we're going, I was gonna go back to the approved site plan. Uh, so if we, if there is an approved site plan for the, the, uh, the site for that building, then whatever is done to it would need to either be consistent with that plan, or they would essentially have to get some kind of an approval of an amended plan to change it. Uh, if, if, for example, uh, we had a building that, that was not associated with an approved site plan, older building, uh, then we're really just following what the zoning ordinance says with regards to that. So we would not necessarily get into this question. Because see, the, wh- what, what brought this question up is, is the provision under the site plan approval that requires the, the site plan, including these elements, to be consistent with the, the, uh, the planning documents in the township, the master plan. So it's only when it's site, site plan is triggered, uh, that's coming before you, that, that, then this question of consistently, consistently, uh, with the consistency with the master plan comes into play. This is one of the reasons why I mentioned the idea of perhaps having something in the, in the zoning ordinance. Uh, we can certainly, uh, develop some basic building form and composition standards, not necessarily mandating any particular material even, but some basic standards that, that, uh, can implement these, uh, these types of provisions in, in master plan in an ordinance that, that would apply then to any project that might come in, including one that would just come into a buil- building room permit process.
Thanks Rodney. And I know that, um, Commissioner LaBelle has his hand up, and so I, I would certainly let him ask that question that he has. Um, but I would also like to hear the architect be able to give us, um, just, um, his reasoning as to wh- wh- what the process, the thought process. I know it's lighter material, but the thought process for using steel versus, um, perhaps a more traditional, um, exterior, um, covering in, in this type of development. Uh, I'd like to hear that thought press as well, process as well.
Or even specifically in that middle portion of the building where you're attempting to give the look of, of brick without actually using brick. So, uh, I'll give the architect an opportunity to respond briefly, and then we'll go to Commissioner LaBelle.
Okay. Well, in this, in this case, we, we were looking, the owner was looking to get something a little, I think, a little more modern than unfortunately what you were originally showing. Because as you're all aware, that architectural firm is no longer working with the owner. Um, and we were hired to use that as a starting point for our services and come up with, building, massing, and a look that would be, I think, a little bit more contemporary, a little bit more modern to the mixed use um, that this building has to offer this area. And as far as using the metal materials, uh, I have personally used the material that we're using vertically at the corners of the building. I have not used the panel, the metal panel that we show. Uh, it, it's just something that I thought would be applicable to this project. I like even the color. It's actually got kind of a burnt umber, orange type color to it. Uh, so there's, so they're kind of muted. You know, the dark corners, the burnt umber, kind of muted colors, uh, nothing too offensive. And, but yet comes from a very reputable company that I have utilized in the past uh, and have done many projects with. And certainly cheaper than the, if you're familiar with a metal, a lot of the, well, Marriott would be a good example of that. If you're driven by Marriott and you see the kind of the silver colored metal up at the very top. Those are actual composite metal panels that are probably two to three times as expensive as the product that we're looking at using here, just because they, of the durability. They're about a quarter inch thick, skinned aluminum panels that have about an inch and a half return. So the owner chose to, to, to keep that look, but go with, with this product, uh, just from a cost standpoint.
Okay. Um, Commissioner LaBelle?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. I mean, I, I don't, as a planning commissioner, I don't really wanna get into forcing an applicant to use specific materials. I, I, I'm, I'm along with Rodney that, I agree with Rodney that I think we could have some guidelines. I mean, I just looked through these three bullet points that are in our packet and the first one about the building architecture, that is totally subjective, in my opinion. The second bullet point, all buildings should have exterior facade made of brick, glass, wood, and/or cut simulated stone. It appears that there is some brick somewhere in there, maybe, or some stone. I can't, I can't tell, because the, um, the rendering is pretty, is pretty small on the screen, but there's some lighter colored brick somewhere in there, if that's what that is. Uh, can you, can you elaborate what that material is, Bob?
Yes, that is, that is a four inch, uh, thick, um, split face block, either a split face or a ground face block. So it would be eight inches by sixteen inches by four inches thick.
Okay. So more like a cement block, not so much brick?
Correct. Yeah, a, a, a decorative cement block.
Yeah. And then talking about some glass, which there is glass, I mean, wood and, and or cut or simulated stone. So it does have some of those. And we're encouraging, I would say, by saying the word should, we're not saying shall or must. We're saying should. It appears he's got a couple of those already in there. In regards to the third bullet point, all front facades that windows distinguishing architectural features, well, that's subjective. Um, commonly associated with the front of a building such as awnings, cornice work, edge detailing, which they, they've got some of that. There's some awnings, there's some detail work. So I, I, I mean, in my opinion, I think a couple of these, or at least the first one to me is completely subjective. And the other two, the applicant is meeting some of those. Now, I, you know, a- again, I, I come from a development background myself and you know, there are costs associated with doing these projects and you know, especially with the current climate of what materials are going for. Uh, I, I mean, there's a lot of projects that aren't, aren't happening because of the cost. And, and I, I look at this and, yeah, does it, would I love it to be completely brick and, well, yeah, that, that would really look nice. That would be like bullet point number one. Building architecture should be, possess a timeless character that signifies the presence of a commercial area. Again, that, to me, that's totally subjective. Would I prefer that? Yes. But I also know that that's probably gonna be, you know, I don't know the cost of this stuff, but I'm guessing complete brick's gonna be three to four times the cost of this. I don't know that. I'm just strictly guessing. So in an effort to, as a developer and a, you know, uh, you know, doing projects in an effort to maybe save some money, and I'm not saying this is the case here. I just think, I like the look of the building. Is it, yeah, does it have barn steel? Sure. It, you know, finished paneling? Yeah, I, but I still think it looks fine. I think there's some durability there. Is it some classic old downtown that's from a hundred and fifty years old? No. But if that's the look we're going for, then I don't think we're gonna see any development in this township. Just by two cents.
Very good. Other comments from commissioners? Oh, my list. So I see Commissioner Lap has her hand up.
I think, um, Mr. Darren has convinced me that I like this more. Um, but I understand, um, Commissioner Cody's concerns with, uh, um, the issue of sort of the longer term need to keep things within sort of the master plan. But I also agree, um, with Commissioner LaBelle that timeless, timelessness as a term doesn't have any meaning. Um, if you drive around town, every single building you look at, you can probably estimate when it was built based on the design and the materials that were used. So I agree that that's very subjective. I do think it's a very attractive building. My only concern is where it's located. But again, if you are trying to develop a look for a particular business area, this may be the way to do it, is to have a fairly large development go in that establishes that, that look and that you, that mixed use, um, in a way that's on display, but also very accessible.
Very good. Uh, Commissioner Darren, I believe is next. Some of them.
I think Commissioner LaBelle was actually ahead of me.
Well, does he have, is that an old hand or a new hand?
No. Oh, I'll take that down. Sorry.
Okay. And then, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, I, uh, I guess I'm looking at this, uh, from a couple of comments I got from Union Township um, residents. And, and I'm looking at this from a development standpoint. And that's kind of where my, my comments came from earlier. We have been really good at putting up apartments for, uh, college students. We've been, uh, really good at taking care of CMU's, uh, external learning buildings. We've been really good about taking care of the two different hospitals in town and making them look like homes, a lot of brick and a lot of asphalt shingles. So it has its place and everything. But I guess what is, why aren't we letting the experts who know how to put facade on a building to attract people? Why aren't we allowing them some creativity? Um, I figure they're the ones that know how to draw people into their buildings. Um, I, I sure am not an expert at it. But I, I don't wanna tie their hands and tell them that everything that people build when they come to this town has to be brick or vinyl siding. I, I think that would be taking us back, and I don't think that's taking us where we need to go. We're, we're trying to draw in more services, more shops, whatever, for the residents of Mount, or Union Township. And, um, that's, I thought this blend of commercial and residential, I thought that might be where we were starting to make the turn and kind of getting out of our comfort, comfort zone. Um, so that's just my rant. I mean, that's just kind of how I feel, so.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Buckley's next, and then Commissioner Cody.
Yeah, I'd like to just kind of, uh, address, uh, uh, I think a couple of points that are, uh, germane to this particular topic, but also um, uh, speak to the, the larger issue of the planning commission's purpose and, um, you know, and I think this is healthy debate. What we're doing right now is healthy debate about, you know, what we want to see uh, in terms of the identity of our community, what that actually physically looks like. Um, but I, I would point out that the, the three criteria that are in, that are listed, that, that Rodney has put, put in there for us are, um, I would go as far as to say intentionally vague, um, and that is to give us room for interpretation as to what we want our community to be. Because again, these are, this building is going to be up. It's, it's very easy to build a building. You can get it done in one season, but it's incredibly difficult to get it torn down. And so we're going to be looking at this building for the next, it, it will outlive everybody sitting here. I can say that much. So, um, so, yes, I, the point that I'm making, which, whichever side that we fall on with this particular building, the point that I would make to that is that they are intentionally vague, so we can have this type of discussion, decide as a body what that means to us. And so personally, I am a little bit more conservative. Uh, frankly, when I saw the drawings, I thought it was brick that, um, in the centers and steel on the sides. I thought that was very attractive. I thought that, in fact, I would, I'd be fully supportive of something that mixed some of, uh, some of the older, uh, maybe more traditional style of surfaces with something newer, with accents, with using steel and things like that. So personally, that's kind of where I land on that. Um, and, um, you know, the only other point that I would make is that although I do think it's important for us to take into consideration what the developers are suggesting, and I think it's important because we're not experts in the trends in architecture or what is attracting people to, um, new facilities or new buildings or that sort of thing. Um, but, but I, that, that, I would only caution that that's a slippery slope, because, um, there are developers um, that may choose to do something simply because it is cheaper. And we do have the right as a planning commission, as, as a, a, a body of this municipality, we have the right to say, nope, this is what we want our community to look like. And there's a difference between, um, what, sometimes there is a difference between what that might be and what a developer brings to us. So I, really more points of clarification, and I just wanted to kind of have that on the record. Personally, I'm not supportive of, of an entirely steel buil- building at this time. I would love to see something just like what it looks like on paper, that is the, the black or dark steel on the corners. Um, a- a- and then some sort of, you know, accent that, that whether it's brick or whether it's, you know, whatever other materials that's inside that blends a little bit of the old with the new. And that's my rant. Sorry.
Okay. Uh, do we still, Lisa, did you still have a comment?
Yeah, um, I kind of questioned. So when they put on those brick like, are they like kind of overlap, kind of like shingles? Or are they like laid flat or like just panels? I'm just curious.
They are flush with each other, but the way that the panels connect makes them overlap. So when, when you see them, it will not look like a panel flush, you know, sitting over the top like this. It'll be flush with the one below it, the one above it, the ones to the side. But the way that they're connected is designed to keep the water out of the building. And once again, it's just for clarification on the quality of the materials. Uh, I've got a, I've got a barn on the other side of this wall here that I could probably put my finger through the steel because of how thin it is. This steel for this building will be at least twice as thick as what most people think a barn steel is. So it's a much heavier gauge material, a much higher quality for commercial type, uh, construction.
Another thing, after LaBelle kind of broke down these three bullet points, I think about it. I mean, a lot of materials aren't available right now. I mean, just trying to get a couple pieces of wood for my deck. It's really hard to do. So I understand where that's coming from. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Um, let me ask just a couple of questions. Um, the black, black metal to me, is, is that gonna make it more costly to cool it in the summer? Is that gonna be a huge heat draw?
Uh, I, I don't believe so, uh, just based on the, I mean, to, to get to your question, just directly behind the metal will probably be hotter than as if it was a white or a clear anodized, because that's gonna reflect. or a clear anodized, because that's going to reflect a lot more of the sun, which I don't think you'd want in this setting. You don't want to drive by this building and have just reflection coming off of it. But at the same time, this is then put on a very well insulated wood stud, six inch cavity building. So I don't see that as as an issue.
Okay. And I guess I wa- I just I'm, I'm kind of, again, being creative and open in my interpretation of things. I'm I'm thinking of that that EIFS stuff is is sort of it's closer to the to simulated stone than the metal is. Did you give any consideration to doing the entire middle in that material with the different colors, the one at the top and then the rest of it in the in the other color?
That's that's certainly a possibility, because with that material, you can, you can router in grooves vertically, horizontally. I've even routed in logos of companies. And then you come back and paint the finish, you know, whatever color you want over the final texture that you have on the ethos. So there is, there is a lot of flexibility with that material. Yes.
Okay, because that could be a lower cost or a less you're not going back and having to redo the whole design. Because I agree, I agree with Ryan in general. I think I think if it were steel at the ends and the more kind of stony like materials in the middle that that would be might have an overall more aesthetically pleasing result. And it certainly would I think make perhaps make some more people comfortable with with approving it. I have to say, I like it a lot. I'm probably closer to Mike in this. When I saw that, I thought, I thought for that area, this is the type of building that you kind of, you kind of want. You want something kind of you know, newer and different and and something that that, you know, people will look at and say, hmm, that's not what I'm used to seeing around Mount Pleasant. Now, if they were doing that with the new building down by on Broadway, or, you know, probably a few other parts of perhaps of the township, I might have different thoughts, but I think of, I think of the that whole you know, area down there in the township as being kind of our our up and coming area where we might want to experiment a little bit. Peter has a sand up.
I was just trying to be respectful. I know the commission's in discussion, and so I don't want to interject or jump in. Would it help anybody on the commission? Because of course, this project goes back to 2019. So this is year three. We myself, I've known about the project for a while now. And we, especially once even Rodney joined the township, we've had this idea because of the previous architect and when we had a presentation. And so in our minds, we've had this idea of what this project is going to look like, and it looked like a solid project, a great addition of township. And so then we got the new architectural drawings and, you know, Rodney and I kind of were surprised when we saw the difference. Would it help anybody on the commission to maybe take a look at what was previously proposed and, you know, understanding that both can be acceptable? I'm not trying to push on the commission that one is better than the other. I can see where you know, the commission could say both are satisfactory, but just different.
Any of y'all interested in seeing the earlier design? Just for the point of comparison, if nothing else? Anyone speak up? We'll have him put it on the screen. If not, then we won't. But if you think it's a good idea.
I appreciate Peter's offer. I don't personally need to see it. I think that the project in concept is a is a great project. I do recall what we looked at previously, but I also understand that those things change as well. So I don't in particularly need to see it. One other thing that I'd like to point out, just as it relates to my position after after you you had spoken for a second, Phil, is that I don't really, I don't want to have to dictate to an architect what exactly what materials get used in every space. My concern is resides exclusively with the notion of an entirely steel development. Whether it's the materials that were used up around the top that are all the way through, whether it's some some other material that's used you know, to to kind of balance it out. That's that's not a decision I want to make. I'm just, I'm concerned with it. Again, with just the precedent precedent that we're setting of an entirely steel building that's going up for a mixed use like that.
Okay, Tara had her hand up. He doesn't doesn't anymore, but did you have a comment?
Just being new, I, if Peter just wants to send it to me so I can see what it looked like, that would be just helpful, I think, just to see what it was in the past. So you can just email that to me if you want.
Okay, yeah, it did. It definitely predated Tara's time on the commission, so she wouldn't have seen it. Other, I'll recognize Tim. He's got his hand up.
Well, something, something to think about is you know, traditionally, if you look at a roof, it's been shingles. How many metal roof buildings do you now see? And there's multiple different designs on on the metal roof buildings. Gives you the ability to bring color into the design. It makes the building look more brighter. It's not that same old traditional black shingle or white shingle. Or if you want to go real crazy, maybe you'll get green. But it's, it's an old style of of look. And what the owners and why they got rid of the old architect is the old architect, I'm sorry, but was locked into this is the way I like to see buildings. That's what he liked. The more they tried to work with him, the the more he dug his heels in. And they reached a point where they had heart waves. And they were looking for an architect that had experience and more of the modern look. And they ended up with Bob. So it's, it's not just a commercial look. You have many, many, many residential properties that are utilizing that that metal look now. And the ability to have the color, the accents. The metal is not a barn metal. You know, we keep hearing that you know, it's, it's it's just another barn metal. It's just another warehouse type. That's not what you're looking at, especially the panels that that are in the center. I was at a meeting with the owners when Bob brought the example of that. And the way that it connects together actually makes it look like it has those mortar joints. So they're doing a lot of different things now with new materials. And that's what the owners were looking for was something that that would be a more modern looking building.
Okay, thank you. Rodney has to stand up.
Thank you. The, I just had a question that came to mind with regards to the commercial space. In terms of the design, I guess it's sort of a two part question for the architect. One was, I noticed that the the entrance to the commercial space is actually relatively hard to find in this building. Typically with, when you do a commercial project, you want that commercial entrance to be prominent. So people can find it. So that's, that's, I guess, more of a comment, but I'm kind of curious as to why it was done that way. But the other element was, I don't see any place where signs can be installed in this building for the commercial uses that that would be there, even doctor's office or restaurant, whatever it might be that ends up there. There doesn't appear to be any functional place for for signage to go in the building. So I'm kind of curious about that as well from the architect's perspective.
Okay, right. And there are three entrances on the north side and three entrances on the south side directly off the parking. And each one of them is recessed in between there. And in that recess, there is an awning that will go across. That'll be four feet deep. That's how far the recess is for that building entrance. So you're you're number one, you are you're covering the doors. It swings out and opens up. And it's also 12 inches high. So you've got some some possibility for, there you go, you've got some possibility for signage on those awnings right there at those recesses.
Okay, 12 inches high, right, right there, basically. That's okay, by by our own little spaces. Okay. Thank you.
What do you envision are the most likely business to end up based based on the way, based on the configuration of this building? And the types of spaces that are going to be available on the first floor? What are the most likely businesses that are going to end up in this building if you had to guess? Either either Robert or or Tim?
Based on conversations with the owner, they are doctors. And what they're hoping for is either medical office, medical supply, that type of related businesses. So we we had a talk early on about restaurants, and they just kind of shook their head and said, no, that that's not what we're we're after here. Because I, you know, I was, you have to go through the raft of questions when you're when you're dealing with a new client. Are you looking for a drive through? Are you looking for what what is it that you are looking for? And the the direction that they were pointing us was was more office related. With their backgrounds, they're hoping that it's going to be more medical related. One of the owners actually is is planning on moving. He has an office in Carson City and wants to move an office up here also. If he does that, he's going to take about half of one of the bottoms just by doing doing that. So that's, that's the intent. That's their vision.
Okay, well, that would that would eliminate the or that would mitigate the question about about you know, you wouldn't need, you don't need a lot of foot traffic signage and and like that sort of thing for that type of building. But I do have to say, before I go to Doug, this, this will be, this will be the slickest building out there selling orthopedic shoes, if that's what ends up happening.
Wanted, I wanted to make a motion to accept the proposed building elevations as presented. Those building elevations as presented, see, find that the building form, composition and mix of exterior facade until on the final site plan sheets. A four point zero and a four point one, the Denon Broomfield Development are consistent with adopted master plan policies for the Bluegrass Center area and commercial development.
Okay, that motion has been made by LaBelle. Is there a second to that motion? Second by Darren. Discussion of the motion. So the motion is is the is to accept that the that the building elevations with the exterior facade as presented is acceptable based on based on consideration of what's in the master plan. Discussion. I guess we've discussed a lot, but Commissioner Cody?
Should we have it with the approval of the building permit? You know, with a couple of exceptions on there or the conditions?
Well, this is a separate motion, so there'll be a separate motion to whether whether to approve the site plan or not. This is just on that one issue. Any other discussion? So I think we've talked it pretty well through. So I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Squatrito?
Yes.
Cody?
Yes.
Buckley?
No.
Darren?
Yes.
LaBelle?
Yes.
Shingles?
Yes.
Lap?
Yes.
And Aubret?
Yes.
So that motion does carry seven to one.
Okay, thank you. So the next issue then is the overall site plan. So any, are there any other questions on on the site plan itself? Any other unresolved issues that we haven't talked about? I guess there are a few minor corrections that are requested for some technical issues related to the site plan. Public Services Department approval, still waiting on that, it looks like. So like I said, it's still open for discussion or comment, but we can also have a motion if someone is is ready to do that.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the final site plan with conditions. To approve PSPR twenty one dash zero nine final site plan for the Denon Broomfield Development, which consists of mixed use residential buildings on parcel numbers one four dash one zero three dash zero zero dash zero zero one dash zero zero and one four dash one zero three dash zero zero dash zero two dash zero zero. Located on approximately two point one four acres, located at the southwest corner of East Broomfield Road and Sweeney Road in the northeast quarter of section twenty six and in the B five highway business zoning district. Finding that the April twenty second, two thousand twenty one site plan can comply with applicable zoning ordinance requirements for site or for final site plan approval, including sections one four point two point P, required site plan information and one four point two point S, standards for site plan approval, subject to the following conditions. Township Public Services Department approval, prior to issuance of a building permit for this project. Revised the final site plan to correct typos on the plan for parking calculations, landscaping and other notes. Add the required landscape plantings, installation and maintenance plan details. And correct the photometric plan and provide the fixture details and specifications needed to confirm compliance with section eight point two exterior lighting. Number three, submit a revised site plan for the administrative review and acceptance by the zoning administrator prior to issuance of a building permit for this project.
Okay, a motion was made by Commissioner LaBelle. Is there a second?
Support.
I saw I saw Commissioner Darren's hand first, so we'll go with Commissioner Darren. Any further, any further discussion on the motion? Commissioner Lap?
Can I just ask a quick question about signage? You asked about signage on the building. Will there be a sign out front by the by the curb? I don't think it appears anywhere on the site plan. Is that not something that needs to be on the site plan?
Rodney, I don't know if you're muted or just freezing up a little bit.
So I can answer from an ordinance perspective that it it does not have to be on the site plan. The they certainly can put one on the site as long as it can comply with the ordinance requirements that apply. So that will be up to the developer to decide if they want one and if they can, if they've left space for it, where would it be allowed?
Any other questions or comments on the motion before we vote? The motion is to approve the final site plan with the stated conditions. So we'll do a roll call.
So Phil, I do have Tara Green with me tonight, and she's going to call this role. Squatrito?
Yes.
Cody?
Yes.
Buckley?
Yes.
Darren?
Yes.
LaBelle?
Yes.
Shingles?
Yes.
Lap?
Yes.
Aubret?
Yes.
Okay, this motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you very much. Well done. Does she have a system?
She will have a system, yes.
Okay, we'll have to wait and find out what that is. All right. So so this agenda item has been taken care of. It's good discussion, interesting project. Good luck with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So our next one is PSPR twenty one dash ten, Broomfield Commons condominium. Broomfield Commons condominium, twenty-four, twenty, East Broomfield. Next phase. And this is a, and this is our first, I believe, combined preliminary and final site plan. So Rodney will remind us that, uh, the new zoning ordinance, uh, does give the applicant the option to do that. So I'll turn it over to Rodney for maybe a brief reminder about that and then anything else that you want to add. And then we'll move to, uh, hear a little bit about the project and have our deliberation.
Well, thank you. Everybody should have a copy of our May eleventh, uh, report and it is correct. This is the first, uh, project. To come to you in this format, uh, when we, it's part of the new ordinance, we divided the site plan process into. A preliminary, uh, stage and a final stage, but gave the develop, uh, the applicant the option to, to try to combine it. Uh, the, uh, which, as I said, in this case they have, this is, uh, the latest phase in a multi-phase project. Uh, that, that dates back, uh, quite a number of years. Uh, it, uh. Uh, the, the process with regards to combined preliminary final site plan, essentially they need to meet the, the final site plan standards. That's what it really comes down to, because all the preliminary site plan standards are also final site plan standards. Uh, so that means that hitting all the marks essentially, uh, having all the outside agency reviews done and in place. Or if there's something outstanding that, that whatever, that, that, that there won't be an effect on the overall site design. Uh, it also had, it means hitting all the marks with regards to the details that are required for a final site plan. Uh, as far as your review is concerned, you did this, you have some additional choices and they're reflected in the, in the list of motions. Uh, potential motions that were included, uh. You can, if you, if you find that this project, uh. It meets the final site plan standards or can meet the final site plan standards, uh, subject to some minor conditions. Uh, you can choose to approve the, the combined preliminary and final application just as they presented it to you. Uh, you also have the option, if you find, for example, that. Uh, you, it, the plan meets the preliminary site plan standards. But does not meet the final science synergy. You can, you have the option to approve only the preliminary site plan if you wish. Uh, and you, you would also retain the option to simply postpone action and ask them to revise the plan and resubmit it to you for further review. So, uh, the, the set of motions that you, you see in, at the end reflect that combination of choices. And so if you wish to see this again as, as a revised final set plan, that as I said, you could take action only as a preliminary document tonight. Uh, and, and ask them to come back with a revised final. So, uh, tho- those are kind of the options that are out there for you. Uh, the, the plan itself, I guess in a report, I'll make a couple of notes. We start with a, a zoning administrator's determination. This is, uh, related to our new ordinance, uh, Peter identified. A question essentially in how to, to, uh. How to regulate the recreational facilities, uh, health club, uh, exercise type, uh, activities that might be going in. Uh, in addition to what's actually already on the site. And so, uh, uh, he did put together this interpretation to give direction to the applicant. Related what can go into the new buildings and additions, uh, the, part of the reason for this is that there is a. Uh, a separate setback requirement for indoor recreation facilities that, that applies. Uh, one hundred foot, uh, setback requirement that was part of the old ordinance, it was carried over unchanged into the new one. But as part of the new ordinance, we, we then also added this new category called health clubs, exercise clubs or spas. Which covers a lot of the same ground as indoor recreation, but doesn't have a setback requirement. So, uh, Peter, uh, said, looked at the ordinance and provided this interpretation to give direction on that particular topic. Uh, we also note that there is an existing special use that applies to the, the project. We asked the applicant to address that on the plan. Uh, which they, they, they are doing, uh, going to do. Overall, we found that, uh, the plan, uh, is reasonably consistent with the preliminary site plan requirements. It, there are a number of details that, that, uh, number of items from information or other details that, that are not on the, on the document. Uh, that are final site plan requirements. These are similar to what we, what we talked about with the previous projects. Uh, these are details that will not have a, a, a significant effect on the site design. I think, for example, one of them is that the parking spaces were, uh, six, are six inches shorter. Uh, than they're supposed to be. Uh, our ordinance says eighteen point five feet is the minimum depth for a parking space. They were shown on the plan at eighteen feet. Uh, it was an error, uh, that, that will be corrected. That will require a little bit of adjustment in the, in the, uh, in the parking lot. But there is adequate space on the lot to do that without affecting other, uh, other issues on the site. Uh, so parking, the parking paved area will expand slightly to accommodate the, that, that spacing, but there's room on the site to do that. So overall, we're, we're comfortable with and it did include, uh, a recommendation for a, uh, of approval of, of the. Combined preliminary site plan, uh, subject to, uh, six conditions. Uh, more than, than, uh, I would prefer to have on there, but, but these are all details. Uh, the two of them, uh, you know, providing an easement for the sidewalk. Uh, and the public services approval are really just housekeeping items. Uh, the rest of the items, as I said, uh, are, are things that will not affect the overall site layout or design. Uh, there's just some details that need to be addressed to make sure it complies with, with all the requirements of current, of the current ordinance. So with that in mind, I'm happy to answer any questions that come, come up.
Uh, Commissioner LaBelle?
I just also, as the first applicant, uh, an item A under new business, this one item C, this applicant again is. My client over on M twenty. So just wanted to bring that to the attention of the planning commissioners to. See if they have, if they think there's a conflict of interest there.
Now, we took a vote on the other and this is, it's the same, uh. You know, this, it's, I mean Chuck McGurk owns the same, it's part of his company, so it's the same situation. Uh, do you think we need to vote again? Rodney?
I, I think if the, if the conditions are the same, I think with the other site, uh, Doug, uh, said that he essentially had nothing to do with that particular. Uh, project. I think if those same conditions apply, there's no need to, to address it again.
Yes, no, good, good point. Uh, Rodney, yes, the same conditions apply. There's, there's no financial gain. I don't have any of this property listed for this. Client, uh, or that property listed. Um, there's nothing that I'm involved with over there. It's just that he's my client and I'm trying to lease some space at the M twenty property. Same, same situation.
Okay, um. Tim?
As a clarification, this is, this is not a application by. Uh, McGurk Companies, this is the condominium association, which has turned this in. There are actually three owners out here. So you've got, uh, CMS, uh, the computer internet service has the front building. Uh, the jump station has, has purchased their building. And then the, the back development is, uh, the McGurk businesses. So it's, it's three different owners out here. Actually, actually four, because the condominium association controls the general common element.
All right, um, so I'll just ask any, do any commissioners, uh. Have an issue or feel the need for a vote on this, on this issue? Seeing none, it looks to be the same as what we've already voted on, so we'll, we'll. Assume that the prior determination applies here as well. All right, um, any, any other questions for Rodney at this point? Obviously, he's not leaving, so he can, he can answer questions as we move along. Uh, is Jessica, is that a new hand or an old hand?
It's a new hand.
Okay.
Um, Rodney, there's a fairly long letter from the Drain Commissioner, Robert Willoughby here. And it doesn't appear that his concerns are included in the, um, proposed conditions. Um, as one of the sample motions. So I guess my question is, um, how would those concerns be addressed if not in the conditions proposed by the commissioners?
I'll add two items that you certainly could add, add, uh, that approval in. Uh, you're, you're right, there, his letter does have some items, uh, on it, uh, and so he, he could. The Drain Commissioner's Office could simply be added to the first condition as another outside agency. Uh, but I would also invite, uh, comments from Tim Beebe on that topic. I think he may have some, some thoughts.
Yeah, we, we met with the Drain Commissioner and based on the, the comments that he had. Um, we actually relayed out, uh, where landscaping is going and how things were being done. So that we could conform with what his letter was. Um, he advised us ahead of doing his letter, hey, these are my concerns, you need to address this before. Um, what, what you have out there is, is an easement which the Drain Commission obtained, uh, for the record drain. The record drain is, is a large tile drain that's underground, but it also has, uh. A, a very large overflow channel that goes underneath the roadway. Uh, if you've been around the area for twenty years, um, I remember when that site was a river. And after the record drain was installed, that was no longer the issue. Uh, but they kept that overland flow channel, so I had to design an overland flow channel. Design the detention area, make room for a sidewalk outside the road right of way, because the. Road Commission didn't want it inside the road right of way. And get a place where I could put the landscaping, which was required by the new ordinance. And so the, the plan got kicked back and forth between, uh, the Road Commission. Um, and the Drain Commission, until we had something that was acceptable. And what got presented, actually the Drain Commission signed off on.
The staged detention ponds will slow the flow, so it doesn't overwhelm the larger covert under Broomfield.
Yeah, actually, you know, as sites get developed in the township, you're restricting it back. Uh, natural flow on a, on a. Not even a rolling farm field is a quarter of a CFS. The ordinance requires you to take it back to a tenth of a CFS. So you're already taking a lot of that water out. But with the record drain and the, those fields that are to the southeast, they bring water up towards. Uh, uh, to Broomfield Road. Now there are a number of different structures that when the record drain was installed, tried to intercept that. But if the, the tile drain, and I say tile drain, it is a. Thirty, in this area, it's a thirty-six inch as it goes down closer to the, uh, to the river, it gets up to, I think, forty-eight inch. Um. If that tile is full, they still want that overland flow pattern, that's why they put that large cross cover. There are, in that short vicinity, there are actually three carousels covers. There's, there's the big elliptical that the Drain Commission put in. There's a twenty-four inch that the Road Commission has, that's almost right next to it. And then, uh, farther towards Ben's, uh, property, there's, there's another cross covered there. So, um, no, actually, as, as. The ordinance is written and the stormwater ordinance is written, as properties develop, you actually get less runoff. Uh, what, less intense runoff. You still get the same volume. Over time, but it's not. Discharge at the same rate.
All right, well, we've kind of transitioned to, uh, question and answer for the applicant, so if there's other questions from commissioners. Now would be the time to ask them. I guess I'd like to ask, so I'm looking at the, uh, at the elevation drawings.
Yes, sir.
Um, so you're building, you're building two new buildings, the red one. Uh, which is more or less connected to the, what I'm going to call the barn complex. And then the big, long five hundred foot building in the back.
Right.
They all are shown with these large, um, warehouse, what I'm going to call warehouse style doors on the back.
Well, that, let's, let's take them one at a time. The, uh, the CMS building is, uh, an expansion for their equipment. Currently, their equipment sits in that back parking lot in the weather. And they're building this in order to bring their equipment inside. So that's, that's what, uh, that expansion is and tha- and that's why you see those, those large, uh, doors.
That's the red one.
That's, yep. Yeah, what we probably call the red bar.
Do they, do they own that entire section A then at this point?
Yes.
Okay.
And then at the back, um, this building is, is set up and designed for people like. Well, uh, Houck painting. That has the ability to have a storefront, but also have warehousing space behind. To store products, uh, vehicles and the like. And that's why on the backside of the building, we have that entire area shown as, uh, loading, unloading. Because that's, that's where they're going to be coming and going with their product or vehicle. Uh, to, to go out to job sites or, or wherever they're going. Uh, we also put a, a large strip of parking back there for, uh, the. Business owners, uh, employees, so that it keeps, keeps the. Those cars out of the main parking lot and we're able to bring the, the parking closer to the front of the.
And, um, on the, um, on the, uh. The non, not the elevations, but just back to the regular plans, it looks like that building is divided into five sections.
That's the estimation of, of kind of building in phases. They, they built similar type building over in the, the Picker development that they had. And they, they developed that section by section as, as they had people available.
Okay, so, so then the intention is to, if this is approved, the intention would be to start at the. At the north end and build, build out heading south. As, as you're able to find tenants to occupy it?
Yes, um, now, economics of size come into it, um, they may. Put, uh, put the, the main structure up. Without putting, uh, concrete floors in, because you don't know where they want bathrooms and things of that sort. So, um, I'm not going to. To say that i- it couldn't be a two hundred foot building in the first phase. But, um, we looked at it, um, how it was completed. At the other development and how it, it progressed along and that was, that was kind of the, the phasing. So I, I wanted to give an indication of it's not necessarily build a five hundred foot long building.
Okay. And then just took, I think this is my last question, but just to come back to the elevation then, the elevation. This, this part down here, I guess I should interpret as being kind of a, a representation of what it could look like. But depending on who wants in there, you wouldn't necessarily have three identical storefronts within that, it might just be one.
It might just be one, that's correct. As, as the, um, leasing would go, you may have, you know. You wouldn't put three front doors in if somebody wanted, uh, seventy-five feet wide, instead of twenty-five.
Well, how do you, how do you handle that then? Do you just put up a, a, just a flat metal and then you cut? Like you decide later, you cut up space for the door and the window when you know where they, where, how many you want and where you put them?
That's what they actually did on the, on the first ones over in Pickard, yes.
Okay.
Um, a lot, when you do the first building, it's the hardest. Because you're putting something up and it's, it's more spec, speculation. When you go to the next phase, you usually have somebody lined up for that. So you know at least what, what a portion of that building is going to, going to be. Bill, if I could, I'd, I'd run through the, the items that, that were in the report.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, um, item one, it has to do with the dumpsters and. again, set of plans got sent over Monday afternoon, late afternoon. And they they wouldn't have been able to see him until Monday morning. I'm not sure if Peter was even able to look at it. I didn't, I had no idea what his schedule was today, so. But that item has been addressed. They've been labeled on sheet three. The the details have been added that they they requested as far as the height. And we had on there that the dumpster corrals could be wood or vinyl. Either is acceptable. But we were told we had to choose one. So it was chosen. The next item is parking. Now, yeah, this is this is my fault, you know, twenty-five years, almost thirty years of supplying site plans that could be nine by eighteen or or excuse me, ten by eighteen or nine by twenty. And this site plan was developed before the the new ordinance. And so we just got in the groove and and continued on. We did not add any additional impervious area. We, all we did is to obtain that extra foot and a half that we needed. We had excessively wide drive aisle on the east side. We just narrowed that drive aisle. We had a thirty-foot drive aisle. It's down to a twenty-eight and a half foot drive aisle. The requirements, the maximum width requirements that the fire department has is twenty-six feet. We're still two and a half feet over. So that has been revised and and submitted in. Loading spaces, the loading spaces have been shown in that back area behind the the red building. There is an overhead door which comes out the north face of the jump station. And there's there's a loading space there, so that that's been addressed. Access management, I think, was just a comment. Sidewalks and pathways, if plan is approved, yes, we understand the road commission wouldn't allow us to have the sidewalk within the road right of way, so we have to provide an easement for that. Exterior lighting. Trying to remember on this one. Exterior lighting, I think, was turned in, wasn't it? We just didn't get it. We got it late, wasn't it, Peter? Yeah, so so that that has been turned in. Landscaping is something that that you want to look at because based on comments from planning department, we added a number of green space islands within the parking lot area to get. We've got twenty-four trees that are internal to the parking lot now. Balance of the trees are dispersed in between the the light poles on the east side. We have the screening trees that go all the way around the backside, the southern eight hundred and fifty feet. And then we tried to do a lot of the tree count right up front. So that the the front end of this site would be dressed. So that's something that you'll want to to take a look at. And those are the items that were on the on the write-up. I believe that we've handled all of them. Unfortunately, we didn't get it back in into Peter in time for him to take a look at it.
What are most of these trees?
Most of these are street tree type, which are maple. We have a, we have a laundry list of what you can't do. But what we're looking at is is deciduous shade trees. Now, up front, we do have some ornamentals that are specifically specified. I think we had sixty-six different shrubs that we had to incorporate in. Keeping in mind that we had to keep proper distance from the county drain, so I utilized the the burn between the overland flow channel and the detention area. That's that is a bank for each one. We we did the plantings along that. So we got it as close to the roadway as we could while following everyone's requirements.
I I think in terms of the the elements of the site plan that where changes have been made, I I think as Tim said, the the landscaping meeting the landscaping requirements did alter or will alter the the site design somewhat from what you've seen and that it will add landscaping internal to the parking lot as well as, I think, I like the word he said, dressing dressing the front of the property and providing there's some additional landscaping around the perimeter. If if you would like to see the detailed landscape plan, then my suggestion would be to to do this as a preliminary site plan approval and simply ask to to see the final site plan, which because it's essentially, as Tim said, essentially ready, he could have for your next meeting. If you're comfortable with that updated landscape plan being reviewed by by the zoning administrator as administrative action, then I would recommend considering a combined preliminary, final site plan approval and just including that as we as we've recommended as a condition that be checked administratively.
Okay, thank you. Um, so other comments and questions from commissioners? If not, we can have a motion if someone wants to make one. Mr. Cody.
I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary slight plan with conditions. Okay, wait, hold on. Which one? I got like fifty pages of, okay, so the one on fifty-one. Okay, so we do the preliminary slight plan with adding the drain commission just or the conditions are met by the drain commission, correct?
But if if you're approving only the preliminary site plan, then you'll get back a final site plan that was satisfied the drain commissioners conditions. That one doesn't need to be added in. If you're approving the combined preliminary and final, then you could simply add to the the drain commissioner in under that that standard that talks about the public services department, just add him as a ring commissioner to that. So it's up to you if you like, are you intending to only prove the preliminary site plan tonight?
No, I'll do that. Nope, I was on the wrong page. So the mine preliminary site plan and the final site plan with conditions. The PS PR twenty-one dash ten combined preliminary and final site plan for the next phase of the Broomfield Commons come to medium, commercial developments on partial number one four dash zero four eight dash zero zero dash zero zero six dash zero zero. Located on approximately ten point one acres of south side of East Broomfield Road, two thousand feet east of South Lincoln, South Lincoln Road in the northwest quarter of section twenty-eight and the end of B four general business zoning district finding that the April twenty-six, twenty twenty-one site plan can comply with the applicable zoning ordinance requirements for preliminary and final site plan approval, including sections fourteen point two point P required site plan information and fourteen point two point S standards for site plan approval subject to following conditions. One, the township public services department approval prior to issuances of building permits for this project. Two, provide a copy of the as recorded easement for the new public sidewalk outside road right away and the zoning administrator prior to the issuance of building permits for this project. Three, add the missing items of required information per section fourteen point two point P to the revised site plan. Four, correct the update, the trash dumpster details, parking and loading space details and landscaping details on the revised site plan. To conform the zoning ordinance requirements. Five, provide the required photometric plan exterior lighting details and specifications to verify compliance with section eight point two as part of the revised final site plan set. Six, submittal of the revised final site plan for administrative review and acceptance by the zoning administrator prior to issuance of a building permit and seven, the conditions are met by the drain commission.
So the motion was made by Commissioner Cody. Is there a second? Commissioner Buckley raised his hand, so we'll take that as a second. So the motion was by Cody, was second by Buckley. I just want to point out, I'm not giving away any trade secrets here, but in the printed version of that motion on line five, there is an extra and in the so if there's cutting and pasting going on, maybe that those three words can get deleted before it goes in the minutes. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, the faces have gotten noticeably longer in the last half hour. Y'all y'all need like a like a beverage or something. All right, um, so roll call.
Um. Darren.
Yes.
Buckley.
Yes.
LaBelle.
Yes.
Cody.
Yes.
Shingles.
Yes.
Squatrito.
Yes.
Lap.
Yes.
Aubrey.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries eight to zero.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll see you next month, guys.
All right, we'll look forward to it. All right, so we have one more site plan. This is PS PR twenty-one dash eleven, twenty-two sixty-six Northway Drive. This is also a combined preliminary and final site plan. This is the one, the property up behind Home Depot that was rezoned recently, I believe. And so there's going to be a little bit of work going on there. So Rodney, anything you'd like to say about this?
Yes, a few things. You have a report dated May the tenth. As was mentioned, this is another combined preliminary preliminary and final site plan. This one's a little different in that that it's an existing building. The reason it's coming before you is because of the scope of changes to the parking lot primarily. They are, this is intended to use this existing older industrial building as a distribution facility, distribution center. And it's going to require require additional parking to cover the number of employees that were that were going to be occupying the property. And based on the the number of additional spaces that triggered this site plan process coming before you. This is the other thing that's that's a first time here for you tonight is the provisions of our section twelve point five, which is non-conforming sites. We often think of non-conforming uses and non-conforming structures, non-conforming lots that have certain legal protections under zoning. But we also have non-conforming sites and added to our, it was some language to to address that. Twelve, section twelve point five essentially allow encourages improvements to an an older development, one that was created many years before the current zoning ordinance. And allows you as a planning commission to approve a site plan for for improvement that site that don't necessarily fix everything. Essentially, section twelve point five sets priorities for for what needs to be addressed on an older site. The first priority being public safety issues. In this case, primary public safety issue is providing for barrier-free parking and access, which the applicants have have done as part of their project. In addition to that public safety issue, the the section twelve point five lists ten broad categories of potential improvements, lighting, landscaping, parking, building improvements, cleanup of a bladed site. There's ten broad categories. And it it asks that at least three of those categories be satisfied as part of a a site plan that will come before you. We just would note that this this applicant has satisfied five of the categories, including pedestrian access, vehicular access and circulation, off-street parking improvements or loading improvements, landscaping improvements and exterior lighting improvements. So those are, so in that in that circumstance, although not everything that's non-conforming on the site is being fixed, the applicant has satisfied the the criteria under section twelve point five to allow the project to move forward with site plan approval. We we did review the site. We we noted that that there are some items of information that are are missing from the 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 final site plan that are requirements of final site plan in the in the chart for final site plan approval. Interestingly, some of that missing information, the applicant has provided. I'm not sure why they didn't do it on the site plan, but they provided it with the building permit application. And so on on page three of our report, page one fifty-five of the packet, we noted five sheets that would actually cover a lot of the ground in terms of providing the information that that should have been with the site plan. And we did review those as part of our 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 review of this this project. And and as I said, found that that many of these issues are satisfied there, so we know that they can satisfy them. The there there are some details need to be taken care of, exterior lighting being one. Another one being that they did not address the sidewalk ordinance requirement. In this case, so they could have and should have, we in fact talked talked with them about it. Put on there a a request for a waiver. Basically, grant of temporary relief from construction of the sidewalk because the property is an industrial property. That's what they should have done. They didn't do that. But in all practical terms, there's really not actually even a place to put a sidewalk out on Northway Drive because the the narrowness of this parcel, essentially, it's all occupied by the driveway. So we we do expect them still to address it on a on a revised final site plan, but there is actually no practical place to for a a public sidewalk to go. We did note that there were some violations, the exterior lighting requirements. Those are all, as I said, on the building plans, they showed the the light fixtures. And they, those light fixtures don't comply with the ordinance, but they certainly can easily replace them with fixtures that would comply with the ordinance. So that's a detail that need to be corrected. Some parking details that need to be corrected, one error on the very minor error on the landscape plan. Those are all details that that don't really affect the overall site design, but but do need to be addressed. One thing that 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 is a concern is that they the applicant, although this is also something we talked to them about, they did not seek out the outside agency approvals that are required for a final site plan approval. So the the actually, the only one they did seek was our our public services department, which which reported back essentially that that they that the existing sewer line, which is shown on the plan, is acceptable. But the applicant did not show the the existing water service to the property, and so that needs to be added on to to the site, as I plan. The other agencies involved, including the County Transportation Commission, Fire Department, Road Commission, Stormwater Management Approval, do need to be addressed. This is an existing site. The storm, I think the the one that may have some impact on the site design could is is stormwater management, but there but the existing stormwater detention basin that's right next door, that that this that's the site is served by is very large and it has more than enough capacity to handle even the expanded parking lot, so. Even though they have not gone to those outside agencies yet, I don't expect that any of them will will trigger anything that requires an alteration to the site design. So with with that in mind, although the plan is is a little rough in terms of some items of information that being missing. Uh, I'm comfortable with and, and we, we've included a recommendation for. Uh, approval of the combined preliminary site plan and final site plan. Subject essentially to these details being corrected. And the outside agencies, uh, being, uh, having the opportunity to review it and provide their, their, uh, approvals to, to the zoning administrator. Uh, I would also note, uh, I'm, I'm going to bring in the three, uh, uh, representatives, the applicant, uh, over in just a moment. I would also note that we do have in our audience, uh, Jim McBride, the president of the Middle Michigan Development Corporation, who's been following this project. Uh, this is a site plan, uh, so it's not a case of, uh, for public input. But, uh, he and I have certainly spoken, uh, a, a number of topics, including this one. And I am aware that he strongly supports, uh, approval of the project, approval of the site plan. Uh, this is a, a significant economic development project for our community. Uh, and there's also a nice reuse of this, this industrial facility. So with that, I'm happy to answer your questions, uh, before, before we move to that, I'm, I'm going ahead and move the panelists, the three of the folks over to be panelists. So give me just a moment here. Alright, I'm happy to answer your questions that may come up.
Yeah, so any, any specific questions for Rodney before I, uh, open it up to the applicant's representatives? Okay, uh, welcome folks, glad to have you here. Um, so we want to give, you heard, you heard Rodney's commentary. Um, I guess we want to give you an opportunity if there's anything you'd like to. Say to us about the project, um, and certainly we'll have you stand for questions as well.
Well, I'm not sure I want to be on camera because that was not a stunning, uh, representation of our quality of work, so. And I do want to say Mr. Nanny's been incredibly patient. Um, we were not certain the project was moving forward and at the last minute they said go. So we scrambled, we apologize on the quality of work. Um, and again, we appreciate you, um, getting us into this meeting to, to. You know, present our, our project.
Very good. Um, so it's open for questions from commissioners. So Livingston Engineering has their hand up. I don't know which of the three of you those that.
Yeah, that, that was me. Yeah, David Leclair from Livingston. Um, if it would be helpful, I, uh, if we can share the screen, I wouldn't mind just taking you. Um, on a brief tour of the site plan, so you kind of know what we are, are planning for the site. That may answer some questions that somebody may have.
Yeah, I think that's alright.
Okay, can everyone see? Okay, so as, um. Uh, Mr. Nanny had indicated this is the site that's directly behind Home Depot. Um, Home Depot is up in this location, uh, I twenty seven is, uh, over in this area. Uh, in a sense, so the only improvements that we're planning on the site is to widen out this driveway. Uh, from Northway Drive, right now it's about twenty four feet. We're going to widen it out to thirty feet. Um, the park or the, uh, the facility does not have very much parking in it right now. There's about ten spaces. Um, so we're going to be filling in an area, uh, right in this location with some asphalt and parking. Um, as well as this location here that's going to get us up to, uh, twenty three spaces. We are going to lose. Uh, one space with a comment, uh, that you all had, so we'll, uh, we'll go from ten spaces to twenty. Uh, two spaces. Um, the only other site improvements we're doing is adding a dumpster in this location. Um, we are adding some landscape improvements, uh, that are depicted on the landscape plan that is part of your package. Um, and we're also doing some site lighting improvements. Um, other than that, uh. Uh, that's the extent of the improvements on the exterior. Uh, one thing I did, uh, I did meet with the county drain commissioner, uh, when we first submitted this plan, so about three to four weeks ago. Uh, met him at his office, uh, went through the plan. He did assure us that, uh, the downstream storm sewer system and the pine capacity. For this site is sufficient for this project, so. Um, the agency that we felt was most important, we did meet with them and we expect not to have any issues, uh, with their approvals, uh, moving forward, so. Uh, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody may have on the site.
Thank you, that was helpful. Um, so open for questions from commissioners. Uh, Commissioner Lap.
Could you explain where the loading area is going to be and how the trucks would turn around? It looks like a fairly tight, tight area in there for trucks, depending on the size of the trucks.
Yep, absolutely. If you can still see the screen, the trucks will pull up, uh, past the entrance and there are some truck wells right in this area in here. So that's where trucks will be loaded in and out. Um, if I could mention one thing, there was, uh, uh, some discussion on the sidewalk. Um, our right of way here is thirty five feet, this, uh, this leg that comes out here. Our new driveway is going to be thirty feet wide. Um, and up in this area, these two driveways, um, this site and the site to the south. Kind of merging together, so we're really talking about a foot and a half, two feet where any potential sidewalk could be added, so. Um, I would anticipate that we would be asking for a waiver of that. It doesn't make sense to put in. Uh, just a two foot section of sidewalk for this particular development. There are no other sidewalks, uh, in this industrial part to connect to or from.
Other questions? You'll be doing some, some work inside the building too, which is just internal and it's not stuff that we'll end up. End up seeing, but is that accurate that there'll be some work inside the building?
Yes.
Any, any changes to the exterior of the building?
Uh, no. We currently have a building permit, a TI permit in with the, for, for those approvals.
Hmm.
We, we are adding a canopy over the, um, a new set of double doors that faces that new parking area.
Hmm.
Sorry.
Uh, let's see, who's got their hand, uh. Is that?
An old one.
That's an old hand, okay. Alright. The questions from commissioners. I think it's a pretty straightforward project. We're glad it's happening. Um, we can have a motion if anyone is ready. Uh, Commissioner Cody, you're muted, but you have a question.
I have a quick question. Um, so if we do the motion to approve with the combined preliminary and, uh, final segment, would we add? If we choose to grant a waiver for the sidewalk? In that?
That, that is a very good question. Yes, that, that you certainly could, uh, add that as an additional, uh, condition to simply. Say that you're granting the temporary relief from construction for the sidewalk.
Okay, then I will make. Motion to approve the combined preliminary and final site plan with conditions. For the PS PR twenty one dash eleven combined preliminary and final site plan. For improvements to the existing, yep, distribution facility at twenty two sixty six North. Way drive. I have on parcel number fourteen dash zero zero five dash zero two. Located on approximately one point nine acres on the. West side of Northway Drive in the northeast, northeast quarter of section thirteen in. The I two general industrial zoning district finding that the April twenty six, twenty twenty one site plan can comply with the. Applicable zoning ordinance requirements for preliminary and final site plan approval. Including sections fourteen point two point P. He required site plan information. Is for site plan approval subject to the following conditions. Add the missing items of required information. Mission per section fourteen point two point. P to the revised site plan to correct the update, correct and update the sidewalk. Site plan to conform to the zoning ordinance requirements. Three, confirmation by the zoning administrator, that all required documentation of permit. It's or approvals have been received from the Mount Pleasant Fire Department and Isabel. Ella County Transportation Commission, that is. Isabella County Drain Commissioner's Office Sir. Services Department for the Water and Sanitary Sewer Documentation Prior to the Issuance of the Building Permit. Or submittal of the revised final site plan for administrative review and acceptance by the zoning administrator prior to issue. Issuance of the building permit and five grant the temporary relief for the sidewalk.
Okay, well, that motion was made, it was made in fits and starts, not by her, but by the technology, but. Is there a second?
Sorry.
Second by lap? No, you're fine. It just was, the thing was cutting in and out. So the motion was by Cody, second by lap to approve the, both the preliminary and final site plan with the stated conditions. Uh, this is on page one eighty two of your packet, if you want to refer to that. Any further discussion on the motion? Alright, if not, we can have a roll call, please.
Okay, Lap. Yes. Shingles.
Yes.
Aubrey.
Yes.
LaBelle.
Yes.
Cody.
Yes.
Buckley.
Yes.
Squad. Tito.
Yes.
And Darren.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so good luck with the project.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Quite welcome.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
So we have one more, uh, regular business item, new business item. And that is PSUP twenty one dash zero one, Isabella County Jail and Sheriff's Office. Uh, special use permit application. So they've, they've found a new site, so they've come back. And so the request is to set a public hearing for a regular meeting on June fifteenth, so. Um, I think I'd heard that this was happening, but, uh, I'll ask for, uh, Rodney and or Peter to. Clue us in on exactly what's happening.
Well, thank you very much. Uh, as you said, that the, the county jail project is coming back. Uh, they, they have chosen a new site. Uh, and, uh, they have, uh, they, they turned in the, the application materials. Uh, on the day that we return, uh, getting the app, the, uh, the agenda ready to go out. Uh, so if the very. Last minute to be able to even touch this on, onto the agenda, uh. The, uh. Normally it is my preference when, when a site plan, a special use project comes in, uh, to give you the opportunity to take a look at it before we have a hearing. The, uh, that, that's, that's just my personal preference. Uh, we haven't really talked about it back and forth, but, but I, I prefer to have an internal. Look at a, an application before we have the public look at it. In most cases, uh, that's what we did with the initial, uh, version of this, this project, uh, if you recall. Uh, uh, in this case, you have had the opportunity to need to take a look at this, the site plan. Uh, on the previous site, I will tell you that, that I, I've had the opportunity to take a look at. The new site plan and essentially you're looking at the same building, a very similar layout on a different piece of property, so. Uh, you will not be surprised by anything you see other than, than, than the change in location. So with that in mind, I would, uh, just like to recommend to you that we, we go ahead and. And, uh, and set this item for a public hearing. It just, uh, if, as long as you don't have any objections, staff, uh, will go ahead and set this for a public hearing. At your June meeting. Uh, I do want to mention that we actually have a second special use permit application that, that, uh. Uh, is actually going to be turned in, uh, I believe tomorrow. Uh, so within the time that, that, uh, could be on the June meeting as well. It's a little simpler project. It's for a filling station. Uh, kind of very similar to the, to the project we had on Broomfield and Isabella. Uh, that's going to be a little further north at Isabelle and Pickard. Uh, but, uh, as a filling station, it requires a special use permit. And so I'd actually, you know, would like to check in with you and see if you're comfortable with reviewing, uh, having, holding both hearings at the June meeting. Just to, uh, if we could certainly, we can do it either way. We can, we can bring the filling station to you and then hold them, uh, hearing at, at the July meeting. But if you're comfortable with it, we'd like to suggest, uh, the idea of having both, both special use permit hearings, uh, at your regular June meeting.
What was that location for the filling station again?
Uh, it's, it, it is on property that on the southwest corner of Isabella Road and East Pickard Road. Right now, there's a.
How is that not, or isn't that already highway business?
It, it is, uh, it, it's own commercial, but it, it does require a, a, a special use permit under our ordinance.
Okay, so is that, so that would be, there's already one gas station on that corner, right on the northeast corner?
Northeast corner. This would be on the kitty corner across the street, yeah, southwest corner. There's an older commercial building there and a couple of houses that, that would be redeveloped.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I mean, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to hold projects up unnecessarily. I mean, I guess it won't be a secret too long, but. Uh, Rodney and I talked earlier today and, and it's possible, just depending on how things stack up, we might be looking at the, a need to. Uh, have a special meeting sometime in, in my guess would be June because. Uh, unless, you know, to avoid the possibility of having a, a four plus hour meeting. Uh, just to keep the projects moving along, but anybody have any thoughts on, on, you know, because presumably the jail. Well, it depends. Is, is the location of the, of the new property public knowledge yet or no?
Well, the application is in. I can certainly share it with you because the, the application is, has been submitted. It, uh, it's on property. Uh, that's on, is actually on Remus Road, uh, it's, uh, it's basically, uh. What about half, three quarters of a mile west of where it was before. It's on the opposite side of US one twenty seven. Uh, basically, almost directly south of the Maury Courts facility, uh, if you're familiar with that. Uh, the, uh, it's on, it's, it's, it's on Remus Road on the dead end section of Remus Road east of Isabella Road. Uh, there's, uh, basically vacant farm field there on the south side. They're proposing to locate towards the, the freeway end of that property. It is actually, I will tell you, the original site that they looked at, uh, when we first were working with them, that was a property they were intending to buy. They ultimately bought a different property, uh, and now they've come back to this one.
So the, the folks that are, uh. Have need to visit the county jail can also check out the recreational facilities if they're so allowed. Or maybe they'll just send them across the street to, to do whatever, but alright, um. Hmm, that's interesting. Hard to know what the, uh, what the, what the, you know, crowd size for something like that will be for that spot, but. So what are your thoughts about, about two public hearings? I mean, I, you know, obviously if each one is an hour and a half, it's going to be a problem, but I don't really see that happening. I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing a lot of, uh. To the extent that they're okay with it, they seem to be okay.
I have a question.
Cody.
Uh, do we limit like during the public hearing, we limit them to five minutes? Is that it? I can't remember.
We have, we, we have, well, I don't know if it's five or three, but we have limited people's time before, certainly. I try, yeah, but again, once somebody's talking, you know. I don't even have a gavel right now, but we haven't, you know, we haven't gagged someone if they've run over a little bit. My inclination would be to just schedule them both. I mean, it, like I said, I'm, I'd be highly surprised if certainly the gas station one were. Were, uh, a time consuming one, but.
With the gas station one on first, you could. Put it on the first portion of it.
Yeah. Jessica?
Do we have any sense of how much other business is coming in right now? I mean, this is we're in the very busy season now. Are there other? Are you aware of a lot of other projects? Would it make more sense to go ahead and just assume we're going to have another meeting in June, too?
I think the the main reason to to potentially hold another meeting is actually related to our internal projects. We have the Parks and Rec Master Plan Update that is going to need some time to to have some discussion and review of of materials. We also have the Master Plan Implementation Discussion that tends to get pushed aside when we have a long agenda. And there's certainly that that discussion is valuable and what might come out of that is valuable. The third item we have that's internal is our zoning ordinance amendments. At our at our previous meeting, we had that memo that kind of outlined a set of what I call punch list amendments to the to our new zoning ordinance. We're currently in the process of of putting that set of amendments together with the intent of bringing that to you to take a look at with the idea of scheduling a hearing on that as well at some point. So we have those kind of three internal projects that that might might do well to be on a on their own special meeting. The in terms of the business, the June meeting is is going to be busy. Certainly, if we hold two hearings, you know, those two projects alone will will have, you know, some some time associated with them. I think we have one other. If I recall correctly, I think we had one other site plan project. I don't have that list up in front of me at the moment, but I think we had one other site plan project that that could be coming in. So it certainly will be a busy meeting. I you know, I don't. I don't think we'll we'll go beyond our 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 set timeframe, but it certainly will be busy. And so these other projects, internal projects may be set aside similarly because of that need.
Okay, um, so do we need a motion to set the public hearing for the jail?
I think if, as long as there's no objection to it. We certainly, I guess, if there's no objection to holding both hearings, we'll do that. If there's no objection to just holding the the jail hearing. But you'd like to see the 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 other application first, we can do that, too. So I'm okay with a consensus, essentially, if we if if you come to that.
Yeah, well, so are the applications, though, will be in our packets for that? If if the public hearing is taking place on on June fifteenth, then we'll get the same documentation that we would usually get at that point?
You would. What we would do, absolutely, you'll get the documentation, let's say, for the jail project. All that will be there. Our report will be there, all the site plan and and material will be there. And quite frankly, even for the filling station, if you choose not to have a hearing, we would still put them on the agenda so you could have an initial review and question it, you know, with the applicant, question and answer period with the applicant. So the only difference would be whether there's a hearing on the filling station project or not.
Yeah. Okay. Is the filling station, does it? Does it border any residential property or or even even if it's not zoned residential, but property where people where there are houses?
South of the the site, there are several existing homes. They're all zone commercial. They are all owned by the same property owner that owns the corner that is being sold. There is a residential neighborhood to the southwest. Maybe one of those lots could get caught in 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 the public hearing notice, but not very many, and and they are not significantly affected by this site, I don't believe.
Okay, and it's the lot that's it is the lot on Pickard itself.
Yeah, it's actually the corner, the corner where the commercial building is. And then I think but it's two of the houses to the to the west, two or maybe three, actually, three houses to the west, three small houses there. Okay, and it's picking those up as well.
Am I remembering correctly that is there a tattoo parlor in there?
That's a little further to the west.
Okay, all right. Okay, any objection to scheduling the two public hearings on the fifteenth? Okay, seeing none, I guess we'll go ahead and do that.
Thank you.
All right. Um, so the next item, speak of the devil, is master plan implementation. So it's already past nine thirty. I can tell my my commission is is a relatively early rising commission because y'all are like ready to nod off. So anyway, one thing I'll point out is that we had talked about the census. We're still waiting for the census data. They've kind of released, you know, they've told us how how many people there are in the country or how many people they're going to tell us are in the country as of whenever they, you know, stop going to people's doors. But a lot of the detailed data hasn't been released yet, so we're still waiting on that. So I've asked I've asked Rodney, once that data starts to be available to and perhaps maybe after we get past the the Parks and Rec Master Planning Process is to start collecting some of that data and and giving it to us so that we can start to look at it, and that will hope perhaps help to spur some some discussion. I'm also thinking that that once we get through the summer rush here, that there's going to be a bit of a lull perhaps in the fall. So we should have more time to just to have those discussions then. But because it's on our agenda and it's a recurring item, is there anything that anyone would like to offer at this moment on the master plan implementation process? Any issue, anything that anyone's thought of, anything that they want to say at this point? Okay, if you weren't nodding, I think your screens were all frozen, but you did not, so I don't. All right, so we'll we'll save that for another meeting. Next item is extended public comments. So if there's anyone who would like to address the planning commission on any item, whether it was on tonight's agenda or not, they're invited to do so at this time. Just hit your raise hand button. We'll recognize you. Give us your name and address for the minutes and limit your comments to five minutes. Extended public comment is open at nine thirty eight. All right, and noting that all of the attendees have left. I'm going to safely assume that there is not anyone who was going to offer an extended public comments. We'll go ahead and close that back up. Last item is final board comment. Any comment from board members? All right, well, I thank everyone for their participation.
You do have one, Mr. Buckley, race.
Oh, I'm sorry. Didn't see that, Brian.
Oh, no, I I only half hearted, but I just was going to congratulate Commissioner LaBelle on his return to the PGA qualifier here and hope he doesn't. He still has some time to stay with the planning commission.
It's all it is is the Michigan Open, my my one event of the year. That's it. Far from the PGA Tour. But thank you.
Yep.
Nice, very good. Commissioner Darren?
I think this is also an opportunity to welcome Tara to our team. She's going to be taking care of us, so and saying goodbye to Jennifer, I guess. So I didn't know anything about this until Jennifer explained it to me before the meeting, so. We've been very fortunate to have Jennifer take care of us throughout this, so big shoes to fill, Tara.
She's training me for the last two days, so hopefully hopefully I can fill her shoes a little bit.
Tara is
Kind words.
Tara is top notch. She she's going to be a good addition to the to our group.
Thank you for pointing that out. I appreciate it. So we have two Terras now. We have a Commissioner Tara and we have a a I don't know what your what your official title is, but I don't know what Jennifer's. What is your official title?
Was administrative assistant.
Okay, administrative assistant Tara, though. All right, so then what is the plan for for June? Will it just be Tara or will you still be here?
I haven't got that far yet.
Okay, well, then I better I better say my piece as well. I echo and fully support what Mike said, which is it's been wonderful working with you, and we really have valued what you've brought to us in just in terms of stability and knowing what you're doing and candy, which I've missed when we've been remote, but actually, all of the all of the technical work on our behalf, so and patience with our long meetings. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from board members? Okay, then thank everyone for their participation tonight. Lots of good discussion. Think it was a good meeting. See everyone on the fifteenth, and we've completed our agenda, so we are adjourned.
Night, everybody.
All right, thank you.
Hi.
Okay, congratulations. First.